Good morning, and I'm calling the meeting to order for the Board of Supervisors for September 25th. Rule call.
Supervisor Parks.
She's a couple of minutes away from it.
Supervisor Long.
Here.
Supervisor Foy.
Here.
And Supervisor Zerikosa.
Here. And today, for the Moment of Inspiration, we have this young lady, Julie Christensen, and she's going to help us with the Moment of Inspiration, and she's going to sing a little song called Anthem. And also her name, or her...
Business.
Business?
Yes.
I was trying to find something else, but it's Stone Cupid. And can you share a couple of words with us, and then you're going to sing a little song, and then help us with the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. I'd like to thank the chairman for inviting me today to do this. My name is Julie Christensen, and I'm an 18-year, almost 18-year resident of the unincorporated area in the east end of Ojai, and proud to be so. And the Stone Cupid, which is registered downstairs, is the name of my website. It's a song I wrote about, you know, with the little plaster cupids, cross-legged cupids that sit on the bookcase. I wrote a song about that, and I liked it, and people misspell my name, so that's the way you get to my song. The song I'm going to do this morning is written by my friend Leonard Cohen, and I've abbreviated it. I think he won't mind. So, this is called Anthem. [Music] Birds they sang at the break of day. Start again, I heard them say. Don't dwell on what has passed away, or what is yet to be. All the wars, they will be fought again. Holy dove, she will be caught again. And bought, and sold, and fought again. Dove is never free. Ring the bells, it still can ring. Forget your perfect offering. There is a crack, a crack in everything. That's how the light gets in. You can add up the parts, you won't have the sum. You can strike up the march, there is no drub. Every heart, every heart to love will come, but like a happy tree. Ring the bells, it still can ring. Forget your perfect offering. Yeah, forget it. There is a crack, a crack in everything. That's how the light gets in. That's how the light gets in. That's how the light gets in.
Julie.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, and we just left summer and going into autumn, so this is very appropriate. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Leonard, for writing such a beautiful song. And if you'll all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Julie, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Okay. Our next item is the minutes of September 11th. I'll make a motion to approve. And we got a second. Our next item is item six. Any changes?
Just a couple. Chair Zerikosa. And item 14, page 5, there's a correction. Instead of Prim Peninsula LP, it's Prime Peninsula LP. That's item 14, page 5. On item 10, there's a revised Exhibit 1. Item 19, a revised Exhibit 1. And on item 30, there's two letters received from Nathan Bourne. And that's it.
Okay, and Supervisors, any concerns, questions? What's the pleasure of the board?
Well, the agenda is revised.
Got it, first and the second. Okay, it's approved, and then we have the consent items 10 to 20.
Can I pull number 10?
Number 10?
Yeah.
Okay, and any others? So, we'll go ahead and vote on all of them except for 10, and make a motion to approve. And we got a second. Okay, so it's approved, and we need information on item 10. CEO?
I'm just going to... What's that? Go ahead.
Did you have any?
Yeah, I just wanted to...
Item 10.
Unless you had a comment before.
No.
Okay. Christine, I just, as I was talking with you earlier, again, always concerned about the issue of somebody retiring and bringing them right back, as you and I just had an opportunity to talk today on this. Okay, maybe you can give me a clear explanation. I guess we understood, as you had Louise, Ms. Webster, working on your payroll system? Is that what it is? Or is it? Give me the understanding.
For the last two years, Louise has been dedicated to the upgrade project of the human resources payroll system. So, the rest of the staff has been reassigned in her absence now. We have specific needs for her to assist us with new and ongoing projects. The reassignment of staff for the day-to-day operations of payroll is being handled admirably by existing staff. I had two retirements that affected payroll at the same time. I'm looking for a little bit of assistance with all of the job knowledge that walked out the door for the implementation of the governor's pension programs. That's going to be a major impact to the system. I'm also looking for assistance in bringing in a new Public Works project accounting/billing system for their labor part, which was a project that was in the definition area, phase, before she left the county. And I'm looking for the streamlining assistance on the configuration of the payroll to eliminate projected time.
Right, okay. I guess my big concern is that we... It sounds like you were hit doubly with two people leaving you at the same time, which makes it even that much more difficult. I guess I look at it from a standpoint, as I know Mr. Powers and I talked a little bit about this yesterday, and we didn't get the chance to talk yesterday, but I guess there's certain things available, or possibly available, if we have people that are going to retire, that critical knowledge that we can try to double people up to try to learn, right? Because we've got to keep this organization running, and we've got things to do, and I understand where you're going, because the knowledge is critical. But I always look at it, I just get concerned that we don't, we haven't put everything we could in place, and I know having two people leave, if one of them would have left, it probably would have been okay for you. I imagine you probably could have figured it out. But I'm just, I guess I'd get a little concerned at the end that if somebody retires, then we just hire them back. And as I just found out right now, she wasn't looking to come back. You've been begging her to come back.
I asked for her consideration, yes.
Yeah, yeah, to come back, because of what happened, so much left at one time, and I guess, but Mike, what is our plan? Because part of this is this succession planning, understanding where we're going, what we're doing, so we don't end up... I mean, the governor put this kind of thing into place, but I know he does, in case of an emergency, has it in there, and this kind of... I guess this is the situation.
He does allow in his new pension plan to allow for special needs to come back to the board for approval. This is under $100,000, so it wouldn't normally come to your board, but because it is this particular situation, I was following current process, as well as what the governor wants for.
But just, it would, as our controller has said, be consistent even with the new pension reform issues, because it would be less than 900 hours, and for a limited duration, and special skills required for this project, so it would be consistent with that.
Right, and there is no question, people want to retire and do that, and then there's... We have needs. I guess from all of us, we just need to, whatever we can do to plan, and when you have two or three people leave you, it's pretty tough. I guess the only other concern I have is this look like a longer-term contract with options and options and options, and that bothers me a little bit more. Is it possible that we could amend this to the point of saying it's six months, one year at the max situation, and then hopefully by then you've got other people trained to do this? Because at some point, you know, Ms. Webster may say, "I'm traveling Europe for a year," and I, where she's not going to be here, we're going to have to do something, right?
True. I have no problem if you wish to limit this to a year, use standard contract land...
Right, I understand that, right.
...for our county option to be able to renew. If you want that eliminated, I will take that out.
Yeah, because I think the opportunity for us is that we just need to make sure we've done everything we could to put people in place, and it's hard when two major people that know, have such special knowledge, leave you at the same time. But I just struggle with the idea, and I know that's what the governor, the rest of the public struggles with this idea. I retire, and then I get hired the next day, and I'm back, and now I'm getting my pension, plus I'm getting this at the same time. So, but I understood, because there's certain times, there is that certain knowledge, and if you're in the private sector, somebody says, "I'm going to retire. Hey, I'll pay you a lot more if you just hang in there until we get this project done." It's real difficult in this situation to do that, so this is the kind of thing. So, I would, oh, go ahead, if we can, how would we amend this?
Just amend the term to be one year.
Correct.
Okay, then if I'd make a motion that we do this, but only for one year, max, and if hopefully you can get it done quicker?
I'll do my best.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And while there was talk about pensions, the bringing her back on does not increase her pension in any way, is that correct?
No, it does not.
Right, no, there's no question, it's probably cheaper for us, in one sense, but I appreciate Christine's always looking for the best and most effective, expensive way to do it. It's just something that's a real struggle out there. Okay, so I'll make a motion for that.
Okay, we got it, first and the second. That's approved, and we'll go to item 26, eight. Excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get ahead here. That's right. I'm trying to be the boy.
It's 9:30.
I'm trying to get in. Okay, no public comments, I don't have any at all. And...
Do you know, we have some people here to talk about the Carlisle Road item?
Yeah.
If you want to do that in the morning.
Item 30, was that 30 you said?
Let's see.
No, no. I don't have any cards at all. Stay, of course, okay. Okay, Board comments? Mr. Foy.
Thank you, I'd like to, first of all, just a couple of different things that have happened. I don't know if you people remember, it was 25 years ago when Ronald Reagan said, "Tear down this wall," and you saw a lot of changes that happened in this whole world. And they just unveiled the plaque at the Brandenburg Gate where the speech was delivered. So, it was on the Ronald Reagan Centennial Celebration. Also, close to home, you know, we had the Simi Valley Fair Music Festival, it was on the 28th, the event was held on Thursday. It also had a special development for Kids Day, you know, and it was, and it was great to see all the different people out there helping, that brought a lot of the kids there, a lot of volunteers that were helping, doing a lot of things. It's just always great to see that kind of stuff. The other thing that was interesting, too, is that we, the Simi Valley, VFW District 7, had their annual ceremony honoring the, remembering the MIAs. You know, I just, this number just really struck me, there's still 83,000 MIAs out there. A lot of people, a lot of families that have no idea what happened to their people who served, and it was just an interesting statistic. It's got to be tough, so. Anyway, also like to adjourn in memory of the people on this list. Thank you.
Supervisor Long.
Yes, good morning, thank you. I have a list to submit to adjourn in memory of folks from the 3rd District. Just two quick things, we had, we're fortunate in this county that we have organizations who really step forward to do good things for people who are part of our safety net, and who also have great discussions on social policy and social justice discussions. Attended the Cause luncheon last week, and in addition to having a full house, they had just marvelous speakers and talked about the success and the work of Cause. Controller John Chung was there, and he was, he's one very bright and very on target, talking about the condition of the state and the challenges in front of us. So, I just, it was a pleasure to attend that, and then I think the other one was United Way Spirit of, Spirit of Community.
Community.
One for those who are being honored, another full house, and again, across the board, organizations and individuals who are honored for their work and contribution to the community. I had the pleasure of sitting at the Interface Table, and they were recognized as the outstanding nonprofit this year, and we all are familiar with the good work that they do, but it was nice that, it's always nice that we, the county, have a role with the United Way, and certainly Supervisor Zerikosa is now on that board, and I think we've all taken a turn in it, but it just reminds you that, how rich we are in this county, with the community we have, and the good people who really do work to support people who, again, who are part of our safety net and part of what makes up our community. So, it was a good week, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Parks.
Thank you. I would also ask that the board close in honor of the people on my list, and not much to report, except I became a mother-in-law this weekend, which was kind of neat. Thank you.
Great. Supervisor Bennett.
Well, congratulations, mother-in-law. Being a politician up for election, I have to say, you certainly don't look old enough to be a mother-in-law, right? Isn't that what you're supposed to say? The, I'd like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list, and one special person I want to call out is Dr. Wendell Lee Ogden. He served in the United States Navy, he practiced family medicine, and he was my wife's father. He grew up here in Ventura, the whole Ogden family went to Ventura High School, and it's a tough loss for the whole family at this point in time, but I wanted to make sure people in Ventura knew about it. He had lots of friends here, he loved fishing off the end of the pier, he went to Ventura Junior College before he went down to UCLA and became a physician, and was interesting for, from the county's perspective. He ran the county residency program at the county hospital, at San Bernardino County Hospital, so he was very familiar with our county system. He trained, many of our docs went through his family residency program, and partially by this announcement, I want to let them know that, and so, Dr. Fran Larson and all of those docs, all those docs knew him, and he thought the world of them, and I wanted to pass it on to them, and I just want everybody to know, he passed along fairly peacefully with his family, all surrounded up in Portland, so, thank you for that.
Thank you, Supervisor.
And I attended the Cause luncheon with Supervisor Long, and also the OK Drill in Ojai, and POW and MIA recognition on Saturday night here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and also I'd like to adjourn in memory of the folks on this list, and I also attended, as Supervisor Long mentioned, the annual United Way luncheon, and also I'd like to share that Michael used to be our chair for United Way for several years, and now we have Matt, a new member of United Way, and we probably had pretty close to 400 people there, you know, it was very well-attended. That young lady that sang the national anthem was just outstanding, you know, just great. And also I attended the celebration of Day for Kids over in Oxnard, the Boys and Girls Club of the grade of Oxnard, Wayne Eamie, and apparently they have about close to 10,000 kids that belong to the, to the Boys and Girls Club, and it was a day for the parents and the kids to get together, and we had quite a few of our, 30 local organizations, Michael, first five was there, and quite a few of our health agencies were there, and it was just great. And also, my staff attended the Day of Prayer, the Delta Sigma Theta over at the Marriott in Oxnard, and also the AWA luncheon over at the Reagan Library. I couldn't be at a different location, so I had staff at a different, Luthers is over, and at the Reagan Library stand was over at the Day of Prayer, and it was over at the Boys and Girls Club. And also, I understand that Mike Solomon was also named the water leadership, got the Water Leadership Award, and several other issues were mentioned there, too. Also, I'll be attending the Fallen Firefighters Memorial this coming Saturday, and also we're going to have the 75th Harbor Celebration kickoff, the Banana Festival over at the Harbor this Saturday, and also the Maritime Museum Grand Opening is going to be Sunday, and that I'll be attending, and also the Day of Caring, we're going to go to Nylon Acres and work on the, some painting and weeding, and we're going to set up a garden there, too, for the, for the family, so. It's going to be quite a week. And also, I understand it's going to be the 27th Annual Public Works Picnic in Soul Park the Saturday also, and it's, you know, I worked for Public Works for many, many years in the city of Oxnard, and I think it's important that we share that. Jeff Pratt brought this information over to us yesterday, and it's very reasonable, it's $2 for PW employees, and $4 for the whole family, and I do have a low flyer here if anybody wants to see it, for the picnic over at Soul Park on Saturday. And that's all I have.
Michael? Thank you, Chair. Just to mention at the United Way luncheon, that the county employees, the county family were recognized as a top corporate supporter of United Way, so, and that's just a reflection of the generosity of the county employees here, and also one of the leaders of one of our co-chairs is here, probation agency chief, Mark Borella. So, it's a lot of extra work, but we appreciate it, so.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, now we go into our item 26, and that's HCE. Mr. Barry.
Good morning, Chairs Zerikosa, members of the board, Mr. Powers, Barry Fisher, Public Health. We are requesting ratification and approval of a grant with the California Department of Health Services in the amount of $3.5 million. We're also requesting for full-time... We're also requesting four full-time positions as part of this grant. Uh, the reason why we're requesting, uh, full-time positions is that it's a four-year grant, uh, county policy limits, uh, uh, fixed-term employees to three years. As with any of our positions within public health, as you know, when, uh, money disappears, uh, we do downsize pretty quickly. Unfortunately, we've gotten pretty good at that particular process. This is an expansion of our existing grant, we've had this grant since nineteen ninety-nine, uh, the Department of Health Services has, uh, asked us to expand our outreach efforts for obesity. To give you an example of what we've done since, uh, uh, two thousand nine, of the clients that we've educated in, uh, obesity and chronic disease, uh, in two thousand nine, two thousand ten, uh, over four thousand people, uh, were provided education. Two thousand ten, eleven, uh, five thousand, two thousand eleven and twelve, over eight thousand clients, uh, were reached in obesity, uh, prevention. The state is asking us to, uh, expand our outreach with community-based organizations, uh, school districts, uh, they've provided us with short, intermediate, and long-term outcomes as part of this grant. So, um, good news with obesity for our county is, we've seen it, uh, level off, it's not increasing any longer, so we hope with this outreach that, uh, we'll really be able to, uh, push this a little bit harder and start to see a downturn with our numbers, so, um, I'm available for any questions.
Any?
Yeah, I very appreciate you giving us some idea of what's happened here, because there wasn't a lot of facts and figures in this board letter. So, the taxpayer's given you three and a half million dollars this, this year going forward. What you said right now, you've seen the four thousand, five thousand, eight thousand people, and you see it's starting to level off your obesity. Do you believe this is part of what's happening? Do you believe it's just a trend of what you're seeing in this country about healthier living, healthier eating, or what, what, what is the deal? I mean, is this certain populations you're going after that you're seeing?
Uh, this particular grant, uh, they want us to focus on the Latino, uh, population, which has a higher incidence of obesity in our county that, uh, is in the Santa Clara Valley as well as the, uh, Oxnard area.
Right.
And our staff, uh, they're out just about every weekend doing various programs that are related to, uh, obesity prevention and healthier living, um, I, I think we've seen that level off because of our focused, uh, efforts, and with us being able to, uh, subcontract with, uh, community-based organizations, or requiring, uh, thirty percent of that three point five million dollars go to community-based organizations, uh, schools, uh, to assist us in, uh, educating the public and changing their...
And Barry, um, let me add a little bit to that, Supervisor, you just had a, uh, community, uh, affair over at, at Rego, over at, at Ushoff over in Colonial, what, a couple of weeks ago, with that garden and, and the zumba dances and, and et cetera, et cetera, then, is that all part of the, the whole process?
That's all part of it, and like I said, we're on this, uh, several days a week.
Right, so I guess, I guess at the end of the day is, we can do activities, but do we get results? I mean, because there's only, there's only so much money, and sometimes I wonder is even worth accepting a grant if we're just wasting our taxpayer dollars? But are you saying that you are seeing and getting results for what is happening?
Absolutely, and, uh, we have specific, we always get feedback from the population that we serve about people, uh, that have changed their habits and have lost weight.
Okay, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to ask.
Have lost weight, blood pressures go down, uh, and the, you know, the fallout of this, which is good, is now we're gonna decrease our dependence on emergency room visits...
Right, exactly. And I think people will say, okay, we want to help people spend, or spend a little money here to help them get a better life, be for, better for their families, all the other stuff, plus less cost. I just would like to see more of the results come in these board letters, so we do it. I mean, because sometimes you can look at it and say, you know, we're getting a five percent result, that may not be worth it to us, let's use the money in some more productive way. Not everything works, I mean, unless we're the smartest people in the world, we start programs and they're all a hundred percent, I just never see a program go away because we never hear about results, so I just like to hear more about this, and so I appreciate that, that's, that's great, thank you.
And Barry, just for information Supervisor, I was over at the Boys and Girls Club, as I mentioned, uh, this, last week, and they were having a zumba class, the kids were playing outside and the, and the parents were inside the gym.
He was leading it.
That was at their gym, and this one gal that, one, one gal, this one lady I know says she has lost ten pounds, you know, just, uh, exercising with it, and that's, that's significant, so, I know there's other people that have lost more pounds as a result of that, but, but I, I, I think it's working, Supervisor, and Rego and, and Self are doing a great job out there on the, in your, your staff.
Yeah, because sometimes this becomes cultural. I mean, I remember growing up and with some great Italian families, and, you know, grandma was doing this, needing this, and pretty soon you get down to the, my generation, they started saying, you know, "I'm not gonna eat quite as much pasta, I'm not gonna eat quite as much this, and I'm gonna slowly start..." It just became cultural after a while, and I, you know, they didn't have programs, but people just started to see it and wanted to change, but if we can accelerate that, it's always better, yeah.
And I think the, the other piece of it, and you're doing an excellent job, is that the, um, public awareness and education piece of it, um, such as at the, um, the, uh, home forum last week, uh, housing, the housing forum, talking about the built environment and the, and how that makes a difference, and how people exercise and walk and get out and enjoy their communities, so, it's, it's many pieces that intersect that, and I, I think we, we must continue that, um, education and outreach. We know, if we don't, the impact to our healthcare system with obesity, that's definitely proven.
Yeah, to give you an additional example, uh, we have some neighborhoods that the closest thing that people can get to is a liquor store. You walk in, you've got candy bars and chips, and our staff has been working with these stores, people that rely on public transportation or walk down to the liquor store to get their milk, uh, we're convincing some of them to start offering, uh, fresh fruits and vegetables, and putting those up front to where, that's where they see it, so, that's how far we're getting in the community.
Yeah, that's, that's great stuff, give people alternatives, because at, at the end of the day, it's gonna be people's choices, but if you can give them some alternatives, that helps, yeah.
And, and like you said, if they add vegetables to that, you know, to their, uh, inventory, that's, they're there, you know, people can buy them, and that's important. Good job. Michael?
Some of the other numbers that, also that we know out there is that the number of folks with obesity, who are obese, we see that number is, is huge, in all communities, and we have that issue well, and so, the other thing that doesn't show up in the numbers is just the enthusiasm, uh, of the public health team that go out there, and they really make it fun, they work with the families, and it's concrete and specific, and they work individually, uh, and it's, it's just great work by all of them.
Thank you, Barry. And we got a first and a second here. Okay. And that's approved, thank you, and then item twenty-seven, HSA. The other, Barry.
Good morning, Chairs Zaragoza, members of the board, Mr. Powers, Barry Zimmerman, Human Services Agency. The item before you today is a request to enter into a contract with Soft Tech Associates, and Soft Tech Associates was the, uh, enterprise that helped us convert and set up our whole ECM, or Electronic Case Management System, throughout, uh, our agency. This is kind of a phase two to the project that would, uh, continue on that effort to streamline the automation and to bring in some of the smaller programs that are associated with our agency, CAPPY, General Relief, and those other programs, in order to continue this effort to, uh, become paperless and, and have work be transferable throughout the county. There is, uh, a note here that we are waiving the, the bidding requirements due to the prior history associated with this entity and working with us, and since we just finished the contract about two months ago, it's really a continuation of the existing project at this time.
Okay, any questions?
So, you just finished it, and then you're going into this new contract with them? Rates are say the same, everything's the same, or did, did it, when you say I didn't go to bid, because I went to bid originally for the contract, right?
Yeah, originally we procured them under the whole design and setup of the contract.
And then they came in with a rate and everything else, so, this new contract, does that keep in place those same rates, we're just extending?
Yeah, this is a, the, we negotiated the price associated with these deliverables here.
Is it pretty comparable to what the last price was?
Yes, very comparable, almost identical.
Okay, so in the sense...
As in the hourly rate for programming and so forth.
Right, and so the sense was that we already did that whole thing, and so we're not paying any more per hour, anything else for the thing, so...
No, we didn't change those.
Right, okay, great.
Okay, so we got a first, and we got a second. And that's approved, thank you, Barry. And our next item is probation, Mark. Item twenty-eight.
Actually, I have the next two items, good morning.
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Powers, uh, before you today, asking that your board authorize the probation agency to enter into a contract with Action Family Counseling Incorporated for, uh, residential treatment for substance abuse, uh, probation involved youth, uh, in the amount of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. This is a, uh, critical gap that's been identified in our juvenile justice system for quite some time. We have youth who are on probation, who are receiving enhanced services, uh, from our specialty court programs who relapse and use anything from synthetic drugs up through, uh, through heroin use, pretty severe. Right now, our response to that is, uh, these youth come back into our juvenile hall and are in there based on violations of probation. They receive some treatment, some services at juvenile hall, but it is limited. Uh, most of these kids need a comprehensive residential program, so, through the Juvenile Justice Coordinating Council with I, I co-chair, along with, uh, Judge Corvah Rubius, uh, we had a committee who was focused on developing and looking at gaps in services, and this is one of the areas that the committee identified. So we are funding this, or we're using some money through our Juvenile Justice Crime Prevention Act dollars to, to fund this, uh, this particular service.
Any questions, or Mark?
Supervisor? Uh, okay, new program?
Yes.
You saw the need?
Yes.
Um, how are you going to monitor it? I mean, every kid goes in it, or every kid that believes he has a problem, or, I mean, how are you gonna, because, you know, we can just throw everybody in it, and people who want to change are gonna change, people who don't want to change aren't gonna change, right? So are you gonna monitor it this way, and really, or give them opportunity? I, I'm trying to understand how you're gonna say, "We got a great result for this, this program."
Well, one of the things that we did, um, while we're looking at our juvenile detentions alternatives, uh, issues, along with our disproportionate minority contact issues, is we identified that the majority of kids coming back into the juvenile facilities for, uh, substance use came from a couple of our specialty court programs, our recovery class program, recovery classroom program, our juvenile drug court program, and some of our solutions kids with our juvenile mental health program. These programs are inter-agency programs, so it's a, it's a team approach, which includes behavioral health, probation, alcohol and drug programs, the court is a participant as well as the DA and the PD, so these are team decisions, so as these cases come through and are referred to these specialty court programs, there's comprehensive assessments that are done, so this is actually a team referral.
Great.
Uh, probation's gonna monitor the contract, but, uh, everybody, uh, identifies the kids that are appropriate for these beds.
Okay, so it's not just every kid running through their, yeah, I agree, I think that's, that's the right way to do it, because if I've seen these programs, it's put everybody through something, you're not gonna have any change.
You're working together that way.
Yeah, that, that's great, okay. There's no question, what you're doing here, if we can stop them from going to juvenile hall, stop them from going into, I mean, this is just tremendous, change the whole life of a kid, and the life of all of us that have to deal with this, so I think it's great, okay, good, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Okay. I'll go to second then. Okay. So, um, so we had a little...
Yes?
Yes. Okay, that, that's approved unanimously. Okay, item twenty-nine, Mark.
Let me continue on, uh, this, uh, next item is asking your board adopt a resolution and approve the expenditure plan for our Juvenile Justice, uh, Crime Prevention Act, uh, dollars for this fiscal year in the amount of two point three million dollars. Uh, these two point three million dollars are going to be spread over six programs. The need for the resolution comes with, we've made some modifications to our programs, and just, uh, a couple seconds telling you what, uh, we've, we've done as a Juvenile Justice Coordinating Council is that we have expanded two programs, or enhanced two programs, and we're creating a third. Uh, the enhancements occur with our Repeat Offender Prevention Program, which traditionally had served kids who were formal wards of the court, and we're now expanding that program to provide services to, uh, certain youth that are on informal probation, who were ineligible before. Uh, the second, I just, I just talked about the expansion of, uh, adding residential drug treatment to our specialty court programs, primarily recovery classroom and our juvenile drug court program. Now, the third program is an evening reporting center, and we are just, we've just finalized an RFP, and it's gonna go out to a variety of, uh, organizations throughout the county, um, asking that they develop an evening reporting center, sort of an intermediate, uh, level of an intervention between probation, supervision, and, uh, court services, something that probation can refer, and the court can refer, for youth who need a higher level of intervention and activities after school and into the early evening, and possibly on the weekends, just to, um, and, and we're looking right now for a community-based organization to, uh, to take up this, so that, that would be a new program that would be developed as part of our JJ CPA program.
This is multi-agency program, I mean?
It, it would be primarily a, a CBO-run program, uh, with, supported by probation the courts, but it would be, uh, a place where we can refer youth, there, there's comprehensive, uh, productive services, uh, anywhere from treatment to education to vocational training, uh, for you, just to kind of give them that extra level of intervention that they need, get them off the streets and, and away from doing unproductive things in the community.
Great. Okay, any other questions? I'm gonna move motion to...
Just, um, appreciate the good work and that, uh, the Juvenile Justice Coordinating Council really works together on all of these different programs and solutions, and the, um, the, the concept for an evening reporting center, um, is, is used in other counties and proven successful, and, um, we, we learn from their best practices, so, it's all good.
And, you know, what's great about the development of these programs, it's really a collaborative effort, it's not probation coming up with these ideas, we actually send a delegation of, of, uh, county folks who work in the juvenile justice system, uh, up to Santa Clara County, up to Alameda County, to look at evening reporting centers, they came back with some fantastic ideas, and we're gonna try to implement them here. You know, our outcomes, annually, we, we provide our outcome, we, we give a lot of our data to the state and develop outcome reports, uh, it's due every October fifteenth, and we're putting, putting the final touches on our outcome report for this year, and I will share that with, with all of you, I will send it to you electronically. Uh, there is a website through the state, um, that talks about how we've done in previous years as well, so whatever information you'd like to, to see regarding the success of these programs, it's part of the grant, uh, the receiving of the money, we have to report our outcomes annually, so, I will make sure that I provide that.
Yeah, I appreciate that, the key is, I think, that everybody wants to see you be successful, and when you're not, you come, you know, a lot of times it's hard to say, "I don't, I wanna stop this program because we approved," I wanna see you say, "Some work and some don't, let's just get rid of them, let's, let's enforce the ones that work and change these kids' lives," so, and I appreciate that.
Traditionally, that's what we've done, I mean, we established programs as early as two thousand, and, uh, have changed, and have, uh, have moved things in and out, and a day reporting center program was something that we established back in two thousand, we stopped doing that for the last couple of years, focused more on recovery classroom, and then now the evening reporting center comes back in, so it's some of these same ideas that have been tweaked a little bit through time and, and have proven to be successful in other jurisdictions that we wanna get started.
That's another good thing, you know, I was saying, we, we are the smartest, we'll go find the best, like, uh, Supervisor Long said, that's great, thanks.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, got a first and a second on that, a little vote. Okay. Thank you, Mark, and that's approved.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for the good work. Okay, item thirty, PW. Mr. David?
Morning, Chairs Zaragoza, Supervisors, Mr. Powers, for the record, I'm Dave Fleischer with the Public Works Agency Transportation Department. In August of two thousand and six, your board approved the improvement plans for Carlisle Road and Bridge Number Two Twenty-Eight. Uh, this project is now nearing completion. During a field and data review that I conducted with the Transportation Department's staff, and we took a look at and made a determination that the non-standard guard rail that was prescribed around utility poles should be eliminated. Further, the required clearing of rock outcroppings that was specified is also recommended to be removed. Uh, since your board approved the improvement plans with these elements included, your approval to remove them is necessary. Uh, during this review, we evaluated the collision history of Carlisle Road, traffic speed and volume, roadway features, and guard rail design standards. Of the five accidents in the last three years on Carlisle Road, none involved any rock outcroppings, and only two involved a utility pole, and one of those was a backing accident, where someone backed into the pole. Um, the guard rail that was approved in the plans is non-standard and protects utility poles, which is very non-typical, not only for Ventura County, but for most locales. For the rock outcroppings, the areas where they are were not environmentally or... For the rock outcroppings, the areas where they are were not environmentally or geologically reviewed for feasibility for, or for the effects in those areas. Again, both the rock removal and the guard rail installations are not typical and do not meet current standard. Because of this, there is a potential increase in tort liability for the county as we required the developer to do work that didn't meet our standards. For these reasons, the Transportation Department recommends elimination of these requirements, and I stand by for your questions.
Any questions, Mr. David? Supervisor?
I was just wondering if we have speaker cards on this?
No, I don't.
And just a note that what, it has some history. The original waivers were granted in part because the residents wanted to keep, I think it was about 158 trees along the sides of the road that would have been removed. So, the board allowed for the road to remain in the width that it is now. And I, and I know we do have some residents here, but I think there is a lot to be said for the beauty of this road and the fact that there isn't much traffic on it. And I appreciate you reviewing the, the plan to put in guard rails if they're not needed and indeed may not make it safer. So, I appreciate the extra effort that you went on this.
Okay, so, it's a pleasure of the board. Okay.
I also just mentioned that I had talked with, I'll make a motion to approve, some of the residents on West Carlisle that would have liked to have seen funds put forward to pave that road, but I don't think that there is something that, that's a condition that we can require the developer.
Okay, so we got a first and a second.
It's actually not a county road, so.
Thank you, that's approved. Okay, item 31. Supervisor Bennett and I have this one, and this appointing James White to VCTC. And Supervisor, I think Jim has some good qualifications, you know, to be that VCTC member, being on the, on the C-TAC Committee and also on the ARC Transportation Committee. So, any other thing you might want to... I appreciate doing this with you. He's, he's very focused on trying to make sure that the clients that are served by ARC and who are very dependent upon mass transit are, are part of the equation. And so, with 17 members on VCTC, I think it's really appropriate to have his voice, so. And of course, you know, we're looking at the transportation study, the county study, and numerous other issues, you know, with VCTC. So, he's going to be a, a great addition to, to VCTC. Sure is. Great. So, thank you. So, I'll second the motion.
I also very much support the idea of having someone who's an advocate for transit there. I think that would be, it's a, a good voice, and it needs to be heard. Thanks.
I agree, and he's served very well on the TAC, and he's very conscientious, thoughtful, and will, will bring that perspective for a population that, you know, we're, we should be serving, serving, so.
Okay, got a first and a...
Be a good addition as a public member.
And that's approved. Thank you. Then we got item 32, correspondence. And make a motion to approve that.
Receive and file.
Receive and file.
Receive and file.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
And then, our last item is closed session. Leroy, we can have any announcements on that?
We will not have any announcements.
And, no, we'll probably adjourn from, from closed session then.
Yes, we can adjourn from closed session.
No, we can meet before.